...new permit requiring planning committee's approval, city council approval, public notice and hearings, and proof of bad for emergency services, and compliance with progress zones. And the OLC cannot meet those requirements. It sits in a flood zone, a tsunami zone, and a postal evacuation corridor. Walport has no police department and only one and a half deputies serve with Yaha and the rest of Olympic zone. They can ship them wherever they want. Zoning law requires that emergency support for higher intensity or institute permits, and we do not have it. So while national politics may feel overwhelming, this is actually a local land use decision. You have both the authority and responsibility to enforce Walport zoning code. There are real consequences beyond zoning. Tourism is our economic backbone. ICE operations, even temporary, carry stigma that drives visitors away and harms local businesses. Any short-term gain from the hotel would need to be outweighed by long-term loss and tourism eradication. And for our immigrant neighbors, many of you have lived and worked here for decades. ICE's presence creates fear that affects workplaces, schools, and public safety. And that fear ripples through our entire community. In preparation for tonight, I've put together a packet for you that includes case studies and news reports showing how federal detention activity gets harmed rural towns across the country. It also includes a clear summary of how the OLC is violating C1 zoning, what the legal process for any rezoning or conditional use permit would require, and why granting such permits for ICE would be unethical, illegal, and harmful to Walport. I hope you will read it carefully as you consume the city's obligations. But the key point tonight is you can act. You can uphold Walport's C1 zoning. You can require compliance with land use law. And you can make clear that ICE operations are not permitted use by the OLC and will not be allowed without a full formal land use review that cannot be. This is not politics, this is government. This is your responsibility and your legal authority, and this is your opportunity to protect Walport. Thank you.
My name is Robert Barrett. I'm pastor at Yaha's Community Presidential Church in Yaha City. Greetings, councilors. I'm speaking tonight because the now-confirmed rumors circulating about ICE negotiating with a local hotel to house agents for a proposed detention of staffing center are deeply troubling. Not just because of the rumor itself, but because of the cities' stated authority. Neutrality in situations like this is never actually neutral. It becomes a position that allows the expansion of an enforcement system that has already harmed families, traumatized children, and targeted some of the most vulnerable peoples in our region. It is interesting that cities like Yaha's and Newport have found ways to say, "That's not the way." A decision like this wouldn't only affect our vulnerable neighbors, it would shape how people see our county, how people see Walport. Tourism is the backbone of our local economy. And visitors who come here come here precisely because this place feels safe, welcoming, and grounded in a peaceful coastal identity. The presence of an ICE operation or even housing of enforcement teams changes that atmosphere. It conveys a message of surveillance, instability, and conflict. People choose coastal communities for rest and renewal. They will choose to go elsewhere if the environment feels tense or militarized. Protecting the dignity of our residents goes hand in hand with protecting the economic health of our region. When a community like ours stays silent, it clears the path for other decisions to be made without us and often against the values we say we hold. Even if the city of Walport cannot legally prohibit ICE from operating within city limits, leadership still matters. A clear statement from the council that this presence is not in the best interest of the community would carry real weight. So would a commitment to do everything legally within the city's authority to prevent the detention footprint from taking over. Silence can be interpreted as consent. Clarity tells the community where its leaders stand and signals that the well-being of residents, especially those most vulnerable, remains the city's priority. Walport is part of a small coastal community that prides itself on hospitality, dignity, and care for others. An ICE presence, whether temporary or permanent, cuts against that identity. It injects fear into immigrant communities, invites a militarized footprint into our civic life, and shifts our shared sense of safety towards surveillance rather than belonging. I'm asking the council not to stay on the sidelines. At the very least, we deserve transparency about what conversation the city is aware. A clear public statement about whether having ICE agents here in Walport is compatible with the community's values, and a commitment to protect immigrant residents and workers who call this place home. Each of you were elected to lead. South Lincoln needs that leadership now.
People are stacked out into the hallway for this.
The first three comments were all amazing, and I'd like to write the very top of my comment as well. My name is Willa. I'm a fifth-generation Walport area resident, and I love this place with all my heart. The DHS is intent to have an ICE detention center at the Newport airport is real and in fast motion as we speak. Newport, the county, and the state are all extremely opposed to this happening here for many reasons, which I'm sure you all know by now. It is crucial that Walport is united with the rest of our coastal community for two big purposes: allocation and support to the advancement of this facility. The tighter we stand united in this opposition will make it less appealing and harder for our airport to be used as a detention and human shipping center. It's important to remember that this is not regular immigration control. These are not normal circumstances and certainly not normal times. Know that an overcrowded, unsafe, cold and damp, inhumane detention center at the airport holds a strong possibility of destruction and destroying far more than we could ever imagine for life here on the coast and everywhere. Let's remember that this is not a left versus right thing. This is a bottom versus top thing, and we are all at the bottom together. Let's stand united and refuse to fall to the divide-and-conquer tactics that play with the corporate at corporate and national levels. The Walport city government and council must support constituents in our communities and do everything within their power to not permit or allow long-term federal leave or anything else that comes up similar in the future. We urge you to not deny any special user permits to OLC or anyone else relating to ICE housing or anything similar now or in the future. We implore you to be very vigilant and in constant communication with the rest of our local governments on these issues as it is moving along very quietly and very quickly. There is no time for silence or neutrality with something serious and negatively impactful as this. We need the city of Walport publicly to take a strong stance in opposition to an ICE facility on our coast and to stand for the rest of our coastal neighbors on this, prioritizing our health, safety, and families over these fear tactics and intimidation. Thank you very much for your time and attention. I know this is a new-to-everybody and hard situation to deal with and to have come up. So let's all work together. And please, reach out to the community. Reach out to us because there are lots of people out here who know and have a lot more information than the next person does. And if we put it all together and open communication, then we can really come to a solution. Multiple heads together to solve so many more things. So I've learned a lot already today, tons of info for the statement update. And I just really want to say that in this time, in this world, we have to stand together. That's where our power stands. Like in the movie Buzz Lightyear. Millions and millions of ants get together. And we do have some sort of a hive mind out there probably with certain tactics. But if we get together, we can defeat the cockroaches. Now, at this time, that's what has to happen to us. No matter what your beliefs, your left or rights or whatever, we have to stand together, and that's more important. That's what we've done for generations out here. We do barn-raising parties for each other where I'm from. Like, we've done it for generations and generations and generations out here and all over, besides the awful things you've also done at the race. It's about the beautiful stuff and the working hard together despite our differences. Please, gather those things. We all have way more in common with each other than any of us do with a billionaire.
Yes.
The next is Joe Sewal. Sorry about your loss.
Hi, I'm Joe Sewal. I'm a lifelong resident of Walport area. And I'm just here to voice mine being in opposition to any form of support for ICE in this community. And there are a couple of specific points I want to make. First, I just want to point out that this is really an attack on all of us. In a time when unidentified masked secret police could risk a person away to anywhere on earth without transparency, due process, or consequences based solely on an accusation, none of us are safe. If you think you won't be affected, consider that the relocation of the rescue helicopter was not just a separate issue. It was a statement of values. This government does not care how much collateral damage they flit in the persecution of their intended victims. There will be more collateral damage. They will, of course, primarily target our Latino community members. I could extol the many benefits these people bring to our local economy, as many rightly have. But to me, they are my friends and neighbors, and that is enough. They deserve safety and dignity not state terror or prolonged debate over their worthiness to exist here in peace. Second, I just want to express my hope that my fellow local business owners understand how not only immoral but unwise it will be to attempt to profit by collaborating with ICE. In doing so, you should expect a prolonged and uncomfortable public spotlight. And for everyone, especially local officials and business leaders, who resist this profoundly un-American attack on our community in every way you can, thank them.
Jeffrey Austin. Maybe Justin?
Please try and get everybody to speed up.
There's no seats.
I had no idea what I was going to say since everything was said. I had no idea what I was going to say until everything had already been said. We have unity. That's what we have to stand in. We have to stand with communication. We can't sit down and say one person is more important than another person. In no way should anything that we're doing be hidden. We need to stand, and we need to shout it from the rooftops. I want to say personally I have experienced what it is to be in a police sweep. And it's not something trivial. It's ugly. People get beaten down. People have their identity cards torn up. It's an ugly thing. We have to stand together because they can't walk through all of us to get at the most beautiful members and citizens in our community. Our Hispanic brothers and sisters have expressed a beautiful culture to us for decades. It's time for us to stand with them and for them. I also just want to add that everything going on in each aspect of what ICE is doing is coordinated. That's going to call upon us to stand in courage at the moment that we're called on spiritually. I would say for myself and for all of us, let's pray, let's love one another. Let's not judge by the appearance of what people look like, what their history is. Let our yes be yes, and let our no be no. And let's move forward because it appears that it is apparent what is happening.
Janet Sarver? Janet Sarver? Maybe you missed doing.
To keep you more comfortable. Well, no, just because I don't talk that loud. I don't know if you're... Because I do need to put this on.
It's on wheels. It'll spin.
It'll spin.
It'll spin. It's on wheels.
I'm Mooney's Janet Sarver, and I'm speaking for Indivisible Ways. We are the local pastor of the... So thank you for including the OLC issue on today's agenda and for the work you've already done to look into it. Your commencement, knowing you hadn't spoken to the representative of OLC, was encouraging. As you know, multiple sources up and down the coast have reported that they've been approached as part of this contract, federal contract, research. So I'm wondering if you've gotten the idea from FOMO to give out any assurance about... So, obviously, they don't have a contract yet. Your rule of control says that government must be neutral. Actually, it says government must be neutral. Respectfully, neutrality is not the same as fairness. Cities all along the coast have taken official stances to protect our communities from disruptive federal side decisions. This is not taking sides, but governing responsibly. Would be reassuring hearing from you today that Walport believes that other people have mentioned every available tool, zoning, licensing, safe deal or ways policy, to keep ICE facilities or long-term placements out of our tourist districts and neighborhoods. Other cities have already taken this step. Walport deserves the same level of protection. We appreciate your attention to this issue and your willingness to lead. Many of us are here today because we care deeply about our town and want to support you in taking a clear forward-looking position. And just personally, I've worked with many, many undocumented people. And the kids I work with are probably probably the most intelligent and most hardworking about the students I've worked with and trained with.
Daniel Brown?
My name is Daniel Brown. I ended up here on the coast in 2020 during the global pandemic and quickly realized this was a place I wanted to use for the rest of my life. I recently bought a home in Walport, and it will be our forever home. I had some other things I needed to say and wanted to say, but all I have to say is thank you to everyone that is here. And that isn't here, but wanted to be and is ready to do anything necessary to encourage ICE to get the heck out of here. Thank you.
The next is Donna Hill.
I don't know which way to finish. I just gotta talk really, really loud. My name is Donna Hill. I live in the Lost Creek Division, which is exactly halfway between Newport and Walport. I kind of don't belong anywhere, and I belong everywhere at the same time. And we've heard so many good comments and statements today. And I just called to speak to something just slightly different. I sometimes see people commenting, "Well, don't you support law and order?" when we're talking about not having ICE facilities. And ICE facilities are not operated in accordance with law and order. I want to talk about the concerns, the systemic abuses that happen in ICE detention facilities and what that would mean. That would be here if we let this happen. These abuses violate basic human rights, dignity, and the rule of law. Over the past months and years, multiple independent reports have documented widespread and severe abuses in ICE detention centers across the United States, including degrading and inhumane living conditions. There are a growing body of independent investigation reveals that many detainees are held in inhumane conditions, overcrowded cells, forced to sleep on freezing or sweltering concrete floors with no bedding, constant lighting 24 hours per day, inadequate food, lack of clean water, lack of basic hygiene access, and no privacy either when using the toilet. One toilet in a cell of 30 people with no privacy. This is according to Human Rights Watch and many other sources you could look up. Medical neglect and preventable deaths. Medical neglect is rampant. People with chronic illnesses or urgent needs have been denied medication, treatment, mental health care. And in some cases, this neglect has resulted in death. A review of 52 deaths from 2017 to 2021 found that 95% probably could have been prevented had the detainees received adequate medical and mental health care. This trend continues in 2025. That's from the ACLU, Health Law Policy Organization, Yale Global Health Review. Denial of basic rights and legal support. Many detainees lack private access to legal counsel and interpreters. They face arbitrary transfers. There is not a good system for tracking them. They are deprived of due process and are held in substandard conditions. This is, again, ACLU, Human Rights Watch. Abusive and degrading treatment by staff, including prolonged shackling, arbitrary solitary confinement, denial of gender-appropriate care, for example, women being held in men's facilities, denial of privacy, and physical and sexual abuse. So that's, again, ACLU and Amnesty International. Amnesty International just released comments on several of the ICE detention facilities. Systemic and structural failure. These are not isolated incidents. Rather, they represent a systemic, structural failure within the detention system and institutional framework that prioritizes mass detention over human rights, lacks independent oversight, and routinely violates national and international standards for humane treatment. This is Human Rights Watch and National Human Justice Center. Under this administration, detaining a person is not a neutral administrative option. It is a serious deprivation of liberty. When that deprivation is conducted under conditions of neglect, cruelty, and systemic failure, it becomes a moral and legal injustice. If we allow an ICE facility on the Oregon coast, this is what we're inviting into our community. These facilities operate without local oversight. We need to reflect upon our values and act accordingly to block any ICE facility on the Oregon coast. I truly, from my heart, beseech all of you to do everything with your power to make sure that we do not have any ICE presence on the Oregon coast.
Tony Domakis?
Tony?
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 I'm not talking about ICE. Is this gonna be okay?
Is it okay? I guess I should ask. Is it okay if you do this public comment?
I'd like to ask the city council, to ask the auditors to make a presentation to the city council in the city. I recommend you do it in January since you'll have all the equipment here for Jerry's presentation. And that should make it fairly simple for them to present a progress report as to what's going on in this community so we all know. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilors, and to our city manager, Janet Cutter, who finally gave us the most transparent update as far as I can tell. As you know, the rumors have been flying, spreading, and we all have been scurrying to finally get the truth. I lived here a short time ago. I was just saying, nine, 10 months ago. My partner and I just bought a house in Bayshore, Ucla. And we also have a house for sale in Chin Pepper. So my concern is that property values, not only for us, but for all of you, will decrease. And I mean, who in their right mind would want to live next to ICE? Right? Okay, not me, and apparently not any of you or even you.
Cheryl Tossi?
I don't have a prepared statement, but I do have ideas about ICE. And they start with their recruitment. And basically, they're saying, "If you couldn't make it at Police Academy, come to us and we'll give you $50,000" just for money. So they're like going after the drags. Once these people become ICE people, they go around with masks so you can't even know who they are. And they act like a paramilitary force, but they have no training in paramilitary. And they have no regard for human life, it seems. And what they're doing is denying people due process and being horrible people. And that's who they want to be living in the OLC hotel. And so I just think that we cannot afford to have these people in our lives, not only real estate, which will tank because who wants those people around you, you know? And who knows what else they do in their spare time? Because they're certainly not going to be reading books about, "Well, hair," you know? I think that on every single level, we cannot afford to have ICE in our units because they will just drag everything down. And it will... I'm old. And that's all I have to say.
Mary Wallow?
Hi. You all have a point. Anything to it. If you don't understand it, ask anybody else. So what I do have to say is how it affects us personally. I am strongly opposed to any and all ICE presence on the Oregon coast and Lincoln County and in the state of Oregon. I implore Walport City Council to oppose and decline any potential spatial use permit connected to ICE housing and actively unfortunate zoning and code researches at the OLC resort or any other location chosen by this government program. Sadly, should ICE be allowed to house agents in Walport, I will have to stop doing business or participating with the city out of fear for my safety and those in my community. I will encourage other family and friends to do the same. ICE has shown sexually risky behavior that may well be considered criminal in Oregon. They have no right to bring such fear to the community of Walport. Mary and Jerry Wallace.
The next is Holly Romero?
Don't default on that. My name is Holly Romero. I live in Bayshore, and I'm also Latina. I moved here 20 years ago from New Mexico, where we have a very different view of immigration. Or as my grandfather would tell us, "We didn't move to this country. This country moved to us." I want to give you an idea of what it's like to be a Latino or Latina in this community right now. Because I have this face. I am not profiled. But I have spent the last 20 years traveling in and out of this country, and I am pulled out of line for extra inspections each and every time. And that is because of my name, what's on my passport, whatever. I work with nonprofits here in Lincoln County that serve the Latino community. And I can tell you from experience, working with people every day, the Latinos here are terrified. They are completely terrified. Whether they have this white face or not doesn't really matter because they know, we know, we are vulnerable. It is why I carry my passport with me at all times. It is why every Latino I know in Lincoln County is carrying their passport with them all the time because we know we are a target, one way or another. I've spoken with my husband the other night when this rumor first came to pass and he said, "I don't know if ICE comes here, if there's an OLSI hotel, which is right across the street from where we live, right across 101." I can't live here. I can't live here. I can't be terrified every time I go to the grocery store. I can't be terrified every time I go to work. I can't be terrified every time I go outside or drive my car or get pulled up for speeding, which doesn't happen anymore. I did it once trying to help the state police, I mean. So that's all. I just, I beg of you to help support this Latino community and I can see that you all do. One thing, the last thing that I will add is, I appreciate, and I have made these statements myself, I appreciate that people realize the labor that we bring to the community, whether it's fish processing or construction or salal pickers or the hospitality industry, restaurants and hotels. But I also want to say, we are more than our labor. We are musicians, we are dancers, we are writers, we are poets, we are chefs. We bring so much culture and diversity to this country, to the state, to this county. And I know you appreciate that even though this current regime does not. So please, let us not remain neutral. Let us not just stand by because of course neutrality is complicity and we have a lot of beautiful people here to protect. So thank you.
The next on the list is Mike Sorensen.
Good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak today. I am very nervous and stressed to be here, so I will try to be loud and clear. I just wanted to say that in this time when we have an administration that has quoted the idea of denaturalizing U.S. citizens and has proven so hostile to our immigrant communities, I felt I had to come and speak up. My family moved to this country when I was seven. We lived here illegally until I was 13 and the day that I became a U.S. citizen over two decades ago was one of the best days of my life. I love the diversity and the inclusion of this country and I love that I saw that reflected in the city and in the community of Walport. I don't know who wrote Resolution 1328, but to me, it felt like we were reaching out and speaking to everyone here. I see or I saw that openness and willing to accept diversity and inclusion as even part of our city motto. We are where the forest meets the sea. We reflect the diversity and the splendor of the Oregon coast. This is a very sacred and special part of the country and our diversity is part of that. And likewise too, the diversity of our community and our people are interwoven in the fabric of this coastal community. Part of the reason for why I came here, why my husband and I came here, why our family, why our friends come down here to visit us. We patronize local businesses, we pay taxes here. We are part of this community. And if you that are here on the city council are not able or willing to step up and say publicly that you value this community, you value the diversity that all people bring to it, then it is not something that I feel personally I can support anybody that will vote against that Resolution 1328, which is taking a public stance and saying that agents that come in with masks and use the tools of fear and terror to tear apart our community are unwelcome. If you can't have the courage to say that, then I cannot have the courage to support anyone seeking reelection, be it city, state, or federal office.
And the last person on the list looks like Deborah.
Looks like I'm a cleanup batter. And I'm trying to shorten all these things and what hasn't been said yet. I have such hope being in this group of people and seeing all of the diversity of who's here and the similar values that we share and the willingness to stand up for them. So one of the things I want to say is that nobody has called out the issue of why are they doing this kind of distress to people of color in this country? Follow the goddamn money. Reason to harm people and it offends my soul. So that taken care of. Coming into Lincoln County is a wake-up call that I didn't think I would have in my lifetime. And I am horrified by the thought of the lawlessness of these young people who are being hired in the ICE and Border Patrol. All you have to do is watch what's happened in Chicago to know how they act, what their lawlessness looks like, and how deep their disregard for human life is. And I hope that that resonates with everybody who has a basis of some kind of value system. And I hope that you guys, as a group, who is hired to look out for this community, will do everything that you can and stand up strongly. And the other piece is, I hope that we will start having coalitions forming. I've heard something about city managers talking to one another and I think that's a very good idea. I think each community is gonna need to support other communities when they start getting the con pointed at them. And I don't know how that needs to happen, but I would encourage that to happen as you guys go forward.
Pardon? Weekly community meetings?
Weekly community meetings?
Do we get?
I don't know, maybe. But it's a part of that coming together that Willow and others have verbalized. So I guess that's my pitch. And if and when it comes down to being in the streets, I will see you there absolutely. I would also put in a plug for a program that I just finished, Turpache Ebene, which is a group that teaches people nonviolent responses to things. We need to hold on to our value systems. We need to stand up in those ways and inform ourselves about how to do that. I'm not anywhere near ready to teach anybody else because I'm just learning it myself. But I see the value of it because it holds your ethics intact. It keeps you out of the squad cars, for the most part. But doing direct action when it comes time to do something like that.
Okay, that closes all the comments. Good night, everyone, for your points. We now move on to council discussion and action items. We're discussing information and the resolution that was offered at 1328. I think this council will need to session.
The only thing that I want to say is I thank every person in this room.
Can you speak up, please?
Yes. I am trying to speak up. I want to thank you for coming. I mean, you're not all from Walport, you're from South County. And if you know me at all, South County is what we are. That's who we belong to. Doesn't matter where, what house you live in, you're South County. And I appreciate you coming and talking to us. You know, this has been a trying thing since we found out about it. We didn't find out until just recently and it all started hitting us. So I thank you for being here. I appreciate you doing what you're doing.
This is the most inspiring display of public leadership I've ever seen. And I congratulate you. There's so many people here who are articulate, knowledgeable, and principled. And that keeps us all together. Keep it up.
So is there a motion to approve Resolution?
I know it's a somewhat, but I don't have it. We can be re-putted.
Sure. Sure, yeah. So Resolution number 1328. A resolution making a statement about city concern in opposition to the Immigration and Customs Enforcement ICE agency facilities and activity within the city jurisdiction. Whereas the city of Walport is committed to the diversity of cultures in which our country is based and the unrestricted support of all of those with differing ideas and communities. Whereas the city council represents those cultures and the people of Walport through the lawful application of the city charter and the city municipal code to ensure fairness to all. Whereas the current direction and operation of the Immigration and Customs Enforcement agency has created a legitimate fear among people, many peoples, and represents a disregard of American values. Whereas the housing and actions of ICE personnel in the community will only sever, severate?
Disaster.
This divide among the community and create an atmosphere of tension, fear, and concerns for all people. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of city of Walport. The city hereby opposes and objects to any immigration and customs facilities or housing within the city. The city will, in cooperation with legislative and municipal leaders at local, state, and federal levels, pursue every angle legal avenue to oppose any stationing of ICE personnel and activities within the city. Finally, the city affirms its commitment to those words, so elegant with things on the base, Lady Loretta, so far away and yet so close. I'm trying not to cry. When you're tired and you're poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free. The wretched refuse of your teen shore, send these the homeless tempest toss to me. I lift my lamp aside the building door. And that is Resolution 1328. And I am making a motion. All in favor? All right, that is Nathaniel Brown. Very powerful. And with that, is there any other council comments?
Cry as much as you need to.
Otherwise, if not, I mean, yeah, council comments. The 20th, we have the parade coming up. So people coming out, celebrating that holiday season is awesome. We also have the holiday food share.
Just for those neighbors in South County, you served 256 families three weeks of food and all Thanksgiving fixings for Thanksgiving presents. We have 274 families.
Wow.
It has to do with South County.
You know, when this ICE issue came up, I have not discussed it with any of the members of the council. And the reason I didn't is I knew how we would stand on this. There was no question. We're with you, you're with us. We're gonna get it done.
I just want to say, you know, I'm the one who put the post on Facebook. I got a little bit of a backlash on that because it was a rumor. And I felt it was important that once I heard that, that we immediately, as a city, took action to try to find out if these rumors are true. Normally, I'm not about putting a little rumor mill out there, but this was important to us. It's important to our community. You know, when you guys, you know, elect us, this is what you elect us for. It's for protecting our communities, for the health and safety of our community. And I think we've come together. I think we've come together not only as a community, but as a county. I think the, all the cities along the coast and our county commissioners, we're all on the same page. And, you know, it's amazing and we got so many differences, but yet something like this brings it all together as one. And, you know, we're one body. It doesn't matter if you're right, left, it doesn't matter. When things are important, I see we come together for the good of the community and for the good of the people. And I thank you guys for coming out tonight. It really means a lot to us. Thank you.
All right. I just also wanted to say that I'm very, very proud of this community, proud of the council, proud of the city staff for reacting as quickly as they did. I like to think that this fight is over, but I believe really it's just started. So we need to let OLSI hotel know that we support them and not who they might sell the hotel to. So with that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Okay.
That's it, guys. Thanks for joining.